Mr. Stye. So we are going to resume. I thank you, hardy ones who are still here at 9:35. And we are going to next move on to board comments. The night is very long, so we're going to forego the committee reports. And the only thing, and I apologize real quickly, on page 38. I'm sorry, Mrs. McAvoy was whispering in my ear. I was having difficulty concentrating. Okay, so in regards to page 38. The Policy Committee, just very briefly. We are making recommendations for first reading. Just so it's clear, the first two listed are to abolish. Under their law, those two policies that we have on the books, unless the first two listed, it's abolished next to them. It's because they're no longer needed under the law. And we're just voting to remove those from our policy manual. And I apologize. And I'm going to. We're going to truncate the committee report since it's so late. So that's the Policy Committee Report. And if we could provide a very truncated curriculum report, I thank you.
I will do my time. The committee met on April 14th. And we discussed the American Reading Company. The committee discussed the implementation of the American Reading Company Program Implementation, specifically during the district's Professional Development Day on Friday, March 13th. Approximately 90 teachers successfully implemented the American. Did PD hours to successfully implement the American Reading Company Research Labs for informational writing. And there were five, one, two, three. Themes purchase kindergarten, they're going to do zoology. First grade, we're going to do wild and endangered animals. Second grade, communities. Third grade, weather. Fourth grade, U.S. founders. And fifth grade, Asia. And we previewed this, these materials at our meeting. And they look fantastic. Very color, colorful. And I think the students are going to really like, love looking at these books. They're student-friendly. On April 30th, one teacher from each school will attend the IR LA Workshop in Somerville. Dr. Brower already mentioned about kindergarten on April 15th. The kindergarten information session, it went very well. The K-6 literacy adoption update. Dr. Clark provided the committee with an overview of the school visits. They're going to be visiting several schools to look at Reading Street. And then also the Developmental Studies Center collaborative classroom unit writing. On May 27th. We discussed the volunteer recognition program that will be held at Cedar Creek at their pavilion. The budget was discussed tonight. Blended learning surveys. Dr. Clark shared with the committee the results of teacher blended learning surveys. The committee will review the results in preparation for the next curriculum committee. And during the May meeting, the committee will also review the results of the student surveys and the parent surveys. We also discussed future plans of the blended learning program, including second year implementation and monitoring. And then under community relations, which also falls under our committee. We talked about the high school auxiliary gym. The committee discussed plans for the makeover of the auxiliary gym at the high school to service the new high school wrestling room. Athletic Director Hughes and Assistant Superintendent Clark will continue to be stakeholders to further the plan along, which I believe is going well. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
I also want to give me this also. I will be attending in President Terrell's place and Vice President Schubinger's place, the Ocean County Superintendent's Roundtable where we will honor two of our students, Mr. Kip Hopper and Ms. Erica Schonberg. So I look forward to representing the board at that nice annual board ceremony. Thank you for letting me.
Oh, thank you so much. Finance Committee, is there a report?
There certainly is, thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met on March 30th. In attendance were myself, Board Member Downing, Board Member Terrell, Superintendent Brower, and Business Administrator Savage. We discussed several items. We met with the Township Committee members regarding several issues. There's a long-established Township Liaison Committee that meets with representatives of the Township Committee each and every year. And this year is no different. We discussed several issues, mainly about the school budget. We discussed Source for Teachers, which is a program that may be able to assist us with handling and managing substitute teachers and scheduling of them in particular. We discussed that we will be receiving proposals, RFPs, for audit services. We discussed a letter that we received from the Township in reference to supporting a no-left-turn sign at the Fort Good River School, coming out of the Fort Good River School onto Lacy Road. And the Finance Committee actually authorized the full board administration to support that at that time. We also discussed our budget, which, as you all know, has been a major part of our time, passed several months. And we also discussed the transportation coordinator position. And finally, with some new information from our Business Administrator, Mr. Savage, we decided to go out for RFPs for our insurance broker, which I believe is on our agenda tonight. And that concluded our meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's flow right into board comments. Mrs. Downing, do you have any comments tonight?
No, not tonight, but in the meeting, I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell.
I'll keep it really brief, just because I know we've been going at this for two hours. But I just wanted to take a minute to tell you how impressed I am with the work and the effort that's gone into this budget planning process by this board. It's been a really long time since I've been in a position where I've needed to work with this many people to gain consensus on a variety of different topics. And one thing I'd ask all of you to keep in mind when you look at the decisions that are made is that, you know, we're members of the community as well as board members. And so we have relationships and friendships with many of you. And many of you are stakeholders and have different passions. And we have worked as hard as we possibly can to work within budget constraints and financial realities to get the best outcome that we possibly can. So at the end of the day, I recognize that not everybody's going to be happy. But we're trying to make the best choices possible. And again, please understand that, you know, we're doing this for the betterment of our town, for the betterment of our students. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes, thank you. We congratulate those students of the month, Elizabeth, Owen, and Eric Sullivan. I was especially impressed with our unsung hero tonight, Doug Bessel. And I attended several different performances this past month, and they were all wonderful. And we had very good meeting at the Strategic Planning Committee. I would like to pass out copies to the board. Do you want to pass it back? I just want to show everyone the numbers that I used to identify cash flow problems on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 1314. I'm getting out pages 131, 134. The lines right to left show an increase in the tax levy to debt service. The figures are high in 2010 and then lower in '11, '12, and '13. And I'm not sure if everyone knows why, but the MasterCard was used to pay the Visa bill. These figures were lowered by the excess monies borrowed from the SOL project. And then in 2014, when those funds went depleted, the tax levy came back to get us. A few lines below the tax levy figures, please see the decrease in revenue for the SRECs. Unfortunately, from 2011 to 2014, almost $700,000 is gone from revenue. And this year, the SREC figure came even lower. This is the definition of a cash flow problem, when revenue is down and debt rises. The district has to somehow make up some lost revenue. Some expenses have to be cut. You can't just keep raising taxes. Decreased enrollment in current economic conditions, it's difficult for everyone. And I can't see asking the taxpayers for any more money. These pages and several others in the CAFR show the cash flow issues. And this is why I mentioned it at the February 7th meeting. I would hope this district can focus more on grants. There's a lot of grants out there. And the New Jersey School Board Association has a grants office that provides support. And their listings were very extensive. I did take a look at them at the technology conference I attended back in February. They had specialists from the grants office at the tech conference. The money is out there, and we have to figure out a way to reel it in under the raising taxes. I thank Dr. Brower for all the work that she did on this current budget. And I urge all taxpayers to please continue coming to the Board of Education meetings. The next business meeting will be Monday, May 18th. But prior to that, Monday night, May 4th at 6:00 P.M., will be the budget hearing. Thank you.
I just want to say, Mrs. DeSensel, these two items don't have anything to do with cash flow. We budget for these items in our budget. So it doesn't have anything to do with my daily operating cash flow.
I understand that, but the SREC revenue is now significant.
But that's not what you said. You said we have a significant cash flow issue.
Maybe I used the wrong terminology, I'm very sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understand.
Yeah, it's those specific items, but not in the same terms of.
So do we have a cash flow problem?
Well, $700,000.
Mr. Savage. We have a $771,000 surplus. I'd like to see that number higher.
Right.
No, that would be helpful.
So that page does not reflect a cash flow problem, or could it ever?
No, does not.
It just shows a decrease in SREC revenue, is that correct?
Thank you.
We had a reduction.
Wait a second. Mrs. DeSensel, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are.
Just to clarify, we had a reduction in a windfall of SREC income, SREC revenue. We never expected to sell the SRECs for $665 or $675, SREC whatever it was, and bring in revenue on the sale of those original SRECs of $3.3 or $3.2 million. That was a tremendous bonus, revenue, tremendous revenue. And it was never thought that we were going to be selling SRECs year in and year out at that number. So yes, you can say that there's been a reduction because the price of SRECs has dropped from something around $650 or $675 to where they are now. But no one ever expected the SRECs to be selling to $675. So it's been a bonus for the district.
And let me just clarify for any of those who missed it. At last month, at our agenda meeting, we had, yet again, because Mrs. DeSensel was concerned about understanding all of the issues in regard to the SOL project. So yet again, we asked Mr. Savage to put together a presentation. We did that at our agenda meeting last month. So there was a whole presentation. And I think almost annually, we do this. We talk about, you know, what the revenue is, so on, how the project going. So we do that annually. And that was done last month. So thank you. And Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Okay, I have a quick report. As always, I have a spotlight on our alumni, since we are so happy of all their accomplishments. Two brothers, Alex Menofsky, he was the president of the 2010 graduating class at Lacy Township High School. He continued his education at the College of New Jersey. In 2014, he graduated with a BS degree in the Electrical Engineering with honors. He is currently a member of the technical staff at what will become New Bell Labs and is working on the latest LTE cellular technology project. And his brother Andrew Menofsky, graduated with honors in the class of 2005. He went to the College of New Jersey, and then he attended the University of Medicine and Dentistry at New Jersey. He is now a Doctor of Medicine, Osteopathic Medicine. So congratulations, we're very proud of the two of you. To piggyback on what Mr. Bidwell said, I thought you said it very, very well. We are community members, we are doing our best and looking at the best interests of the whole community. And we're friends, and we live with you, and we're around all of you. And we are trying to do our best. As far as the auxiliary gym, I was a part of the Curriculum Committee. I knew there, I know there's ongoing discussions with Dr. Clark about the auxiliary gym, how it can best serve a lot of people's needs. I know it's going to be for the wrestling, but it was said that the gym classes and other groups could use it also. And I know those that do have an interest in having ongoing discussions with the administration. Please, you know, continue to have the discussions with them. And that concludes my comments for tonight. President Terrell.
Thank you very much. Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, President Terrell. I'll start off by congratulating our students this evening, Elizabeth, Owen, Eric, and Douglas. I think two fine universities came out of that discussion or presentation this evening, Fordham and NJIT. For those of you that have been involved, many people have left the audience this evening. For those that have been involved and participated in the strategic planning session, technology was a very important topic that came up over and over, over and over again. And we're looking very closely at this one-to-one initiative. But let me stress this, that a device is not going to replace a teacher in the classroom. It's not going to replace the professionalism and the expertise that the teacher delivers to the student in the classroom. In order to do this, and we've talked about it internally, and to do it right, the plan has to be vetted out, it has to be implemented correctly. Proper training has to be delivered to the teachers, both initially and ongoing. And that's how we deliver maximum results. There are studies that show one-to-one devices in the classroom improve student achievement, increases science scores, English scores, other scores for the students. And ultimately, that's kind of what we're talking about here. I do not believe students are products, okay? I can understand how there's a, how people think that at the end of the day, this is a business. But our business, as this board, is to provide the best learning environment for student achievement, hands down. And we are trying to do that. The work that's gone into crunch this budget, to look at the numbers, to look at cost structures, has been endless. There's been a lot of tireless hours put into it. You're never going to make everyone happy. Now, I'll say this, I'll emphasize with the folks that came out in regards to the aides, paraprofessionals. And, you know, if you look at it, we have to take a look at that, we have to discuss that internally. But I will say this, not many other districts have the same type of services. And, you know, I think if you look at these things, we'll find a way to get by. Just know, and I think Mr. Bidwell said it perfectly, we're all members of this community. We all live here together. You know, we all work together, we all kind of interact together. We're going to try to do the best that we can to try to keep this thing, this budget, where it's at, and keep it that's palatable for everyone in the community. So that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Vice President Schubinger. Pardon?
Yes, Lita.
I apologize.
She was the first that.
I'm ready. I do have a few comments. First, certainly, it seems like it was another meeting ago, but we had several students, again, being recognized, which is the most important thing that we do here each and every month, because it's our students who make our district go. And I'm still amazed each and every month of the diverse interests of our students, which is really a sort of a large part about what Lacy's about, in my opinion. Going to schools all over the country, trade schools, colleges, universities. So we're doing something right. And I hope we see those students back here every month. I know I will. Secondly, I just, regarding the budget proposal you saw tonight, it is a proposal from the administration with the collaboration of many, many people, starting months ago. Teachers had input, administrators had input, the Finance Committee of this board had input, and the entire board. But to be candid with you, what you saw tonight, we all saw just a few hours ago ourselves for the first time, as you saw it tonight. Not the first time that we've seen some of the numbers and everything that goes into it. So it is a proposal. The budget hearing is on the 14th.
Fourth.
Excuse me, the fourth. The fourth. But I did sense a little bit from people who were speaking, and I think it's great. Democracy in Fort Good River, Atlantic Harbor, love it. I'm glad to see everybody out here. But I did get the sense that some people felt, this is a done deal, we're done. It's a proposal, it means it's, this is what it is. That's not necessarily the case. We have a lot of work to do. We will not stop in the next several weeks. And I gather that we're going to have a lot more discussions going forward. So just a thought. It's great to see the diverse opinions from our community, and there are many. And I have three children who actually go to school in this district, and I've lived here for over 40 years. So I have a vested interest, both as a taxpayer and from wanting my kids to learn. So I hope with that alone, I see both ends of the spectrum about doing what's best for our students, and also keeping an eye on all of us as taxpayers and what we can afford. It's not easy, but we do, in my opinion, a very good job of trying to do our best and striking a balance. It's taxing, no pun intended, but it's a good experience for us to be working with this budget. I want to speak to the idea of fiscal accountability that keeps coming up, and as it should, because this is what it's about. Couple of key points. I ran some numbers. And some of them are more general and some are specific to a project that we're very proud of. Regarding our tax levy, the school tax levy, over the course of the last eight years, going back to 2007 through 2014, certainly, I didn't include this year's numbers because we haven't approved it yet. The actual tax increase, percent increase, from 2007 through 2014, over an eight-year period, is just shy of 14%. And in real dollars, it's about $5.5 million of real money over eight years. Now, that's a lot of money. I totally agree. It costs a lot of money to educate our students. But just for comparison purposes, so we can talk really aptly here. When you look at the municipal tax levy, which is also where we're paying our taxes, okay, over that same period, an eight-year period, again, between 2007 to 2014, as opposed to the school district levy, which is about 14%, the municipal tax levy, your municipal tax levy, our municipal tax levy, has increased 128%. 128%. So were that budget, that municipal tax levy was a shade over $5 million in 2007, it's almost $12 million as of 2014. So 14%, we could do better. I'll be the first one to sit here. I'd stand up if it was appropriate, but I'll do that later, and say that we need to do better. But the municipal tax levy, 128%, so just keep that in mind when you're comparing fiscal accountability. The second thing I wanted to talk about was a project that I am very proud of, and I believe most of this board is still proud of, our energy efficiency project, excuse me, project that we talked about at the last meeting. And I have to say, there is a huge difference between saying that we have a cash flow problem and saying that we're making less money now than we once did. There's a huge difference. But to further my point, that project, as we showed last month, from start to finish, or start to current, I should say, has a balance of nearly $11 million. That is not a project, that is a bad project. But as it pertains to budgets, as we're talking about what's best for our district and what we've done for the past eight years. The debt service bond payments, the debt service aid, the excess capital funding that we had at one point, those things are going to go away at some point. But there's two factors, because we did what we did with our energy efficiency project, are going to remain, and that is the sale of energy credits and our savings, which people seem to discount. When you put those two factors together, how much we sold those energy credits for and what we saved in real dollars on our bills, over the course of the lifespan of this project, which for now, we're going with a five-year period, we've saved, that amount amounts to about $6.8 million, the sale of the energy credits, or getting the energy credits, and the savings on our bills, on our energy bills. So when we're talking pennies, which has come up tonight, the current amount for a penny, Mr. Savage, please correct me if I'm wrong, is approximately $378,000. The value of a penny on our tax rate, correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so when you use today's assessed value of a home, because it would be very difficult to go back and see all the changes of the assessed value of our homes over that time, using today's, just to be fair, and $378,000 a penny, those two figures that I went over, that totaled about $6.8 million from a project that we did here, because no one else around us wanted to do it, we stuck our neck out and tried to help our taxpayers, amounts to about 17.8 cents on the tax rate. 17.8 cents, about 18 cents on our tax rate. What would have happened, where would we be today without that? I'm not asking for an answer, but I don't know where we'd be. All these things we're talking about, things that we've accomplished, first of all, the energy efficiency project, which includes window replacements and all the other energy upgrades, the technology upgrades we're talking about today and that we've already done in the past several years, the safety and security measures that we've accomplished, full-day kindergarten, random drug testing implementation, all the curriculum modifications we've made, all things that have been received well, block scheduling, not getting done, wouldn't have been done, not without raising taxes, a minimum of 17.8 cents on the tax rate, at a minimum. So I want to make sure when we're talking fiscal accountability, that people understand what we're talking about. Finally, I just want to say thank you to all of our speakers here tonight. Seeing the full crowd, it's very good. There's times here, I've been in many meetings, where we had a couple people and a few crickets, and, you know, we don't like it that way. So keep coming back, May 4th, okay? May 4th, we'll see you then. We want more people coming out and looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the latitude, as well.
Oh, no problem. And I just want to correct, we were, I was just talking about at our meeting, May 16th, 2015, it's right in the minutes on page five, that Mr. Savage did do a presentation and provided a spreadsheet in regard to the energy efficiency project. That was during our regular board meeting, not during the agenda meeting. So I just want to point it out, it's in there, we did it, we do it annually, we will continue to remind you all of the good news about our SOL project. But more importantly, at least what I think is more importantly, is how wonderful Doug, Owen, Elizabeth, and Eric are. And that's why we're here. And I think everybody who's left would agree with me that that's why we're here, because of these young people. And Doug Bessel, I'll be able to help celebrate with him on May 6th while he's honored by the whole county. He'll be honored at the Ocean County Student Recognition Program that recognizes all the unsung heroes, as Dr. Brower mentioned, but I'll be thrilled to be there representing the board. I also have to give a plug for the after-school enrichment programs at Mill Pond. They're doing a, they're celebrating, which they do annually, people don't know this always, that we have too many events, right, too much going on. But May 12th, 2015, from 6:00 to 7:00, it's going to be at the middle school cafeteria. You'll get to see all our enrichment students and what they've accomplished during the year in the after-school program. So please attend that. And other than that, we'll see you on May 4th at 6:00 P.M. If the location changes, we will notify and publish it everywhere.
The May 16th regular...
And the May 16th regular meeting, because we will be honoring our Teachers of the Year, will be in the high school auditorium. So that's very important. And we also honor our sixth graders who received a presidential award, and other students will be honored at that time. So it's a, it's a wonderful meeting, the May regular meeting. In regard to new business, do I have a motion for A through L?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes, and I would like to read them individually, if I could. Item A is...
I would ask that you not, unless you're going to make a separate motion to do so.
No, it's just that people ask what we're doing with item A through L, unless we have an agenda...
I do, it's all, Mrs. DeSensel, would you like to make a motion to proceed in a different way? You can do so, and we'll see if the motion carries.
No, yes on all.
I'm sorry, what was your vote?
Yes on all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, thank you. In regard to A, because of the late hour, I'm going to read the names of all those, because it's important that everybody realizes how supported we are in the community. Lisa Gerbert, and these are all the donations, Tara Rodriguez, The Rotary Club, Conde Dore, Linda's Pizza, Vesuvio's Pizza, Little Italy, Joey Tomato's Pizza, Sweet Cake, Sweet Memory Cake Shop, Goddard School, Perkins Restaurant and Bakery, Mud City Crab Cake Company, Lacey Township Education Association, and the principal of Forkett River School, Mr. Fiedler, and the supervisor, Janeska Salimi. They all donated for the literacy program at Forkett River School. So all those donations helped a literacy program happen at Forkett River School, so we personally thank them. On top of that, we received donations from The Rotary Club to Cedar Creek, Wells Fargo to Cedar Creek, Rotary Club to Atlantic Harbor, Emma Smith Family to Atlantic Harbor. Do I have a motion, and a big thank you to all the people and businesses?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. It's getting late, and now I'm hot because the door's shut, right? So next is, I, ah, everybody was freezing, now I'm warming up. So curriculum and programs, I apologize. Number three, it's, there's only one item, A, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Under professional days and workshops, under motion, well, let me just take the first motion. Move to approve the professional days for the following staff members. Do I have a...
Are you talking number one?
Yeah, number one.
I'll do that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, thank you. And the reason I split those is just so it would be less confusing. The second motion is actually to rescind professional days for Board of Education members that were approved at the January 20, 2015 meeting. That training was canceled due to weather conditions. Do I have a motion to rescind?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Do we have to abstain on this one, Warren?
Mrs. Stein. If not, providing...
It's not giving a benefit.
Yes, the opposite.
Yes.
I don't...
But I, I, if, let's put it this way, I wouldn't vote no on it, so...
Right.
I would abstain before I do that.
I, I think...
If my, if our name is on this whole thing, are we supposed to abstain? Abstain.
I, I think that it's reasonable for you to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the guidance.
As, as to you.
Right.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Did, I'm sorry, did you...
Shave second.
As to the whole thing, or just to yourself, Mrs. DeSensel?
Oh, I guess to myself, okay.
So it's yes for the others, but abstain for you.
Yes on, and more even than abstain on mine, yes.
I apologize, sorry.
Mr. Giordano, you said, yes?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain on myself, yes on the others.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Abstain as to myself and yes on the other two, thank you. Number five, student matter, there's only one motion, matter A.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Jumping the gun again. I apologize. Next page, 42, certificated personnel to have a motion, A through F.
Move.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, and B, in regard to retirements, I want to thank everyone for their service to our great district. In regard to the next page, number seven, support staff non-certificated personnel to have motion A through...
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.[1698.26]